I'd like to call this February the fourth meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order, please, can we have a roll call?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
All right, thank you Kathy, if we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
No changes.
Seeing no changes, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have the motion and the second, and discussion by the council, seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, and that brings us to item two, receive a report on sinkhole floodplain study by Dr. Hart of Tennessee Technological University, Mr. Hart?
All right, I wanted to thank the city first of all for funding this project and having the foresight, I think this was a...
Dr. Hart, if you'd grab the microphone out of the, so that the television viewers know.
And I just wanted to thank the city for funding this project, and it was very worthwhile, and I think that the results are something that the city's needed, Cookeville has a unique situation in terms of its system of drainage, and we, Dr. Hugh Mills and Peter Lee were also on this project, they're not here tonight, but they've, they've also worked on this along with some other, some Tennessee Tech students as well. Cookeville's located in, on the Highland Rim, which is just kind of one stair step down from the, from the plateau, and so we don't have a lot of large rivers, of course, we're kind of on this, on this sinkhole plain, but we have a lot of, the capability to have flooding in sinkholes. And this is the typical geology that you'll see in, throughout the city and the surrounding areas, that the streams will flow along the surface for a while until they get down to a certain part of the geology where it's more limestone, where sinkholes occur, and the streams at that point will flow underground. And eventually, when they get down to a level where we have another rock that's, that doesn't form caves as much, they'll flow back above ground. So this is a very common thing to see, most of the streams in Cookeville do this. This is a map of part of the city that shows some of the streams, these blue lines, probably the most well-known is the Inser Sink Stream Breeding Mill Branch, but there's several others that do the same thing, they'll flow on the surface, and eventually see these blue lines disappear, well, they're not, they don't just stop there, that's where they go underground. And at that point is what we'd call the choke point or the swallowt, where if that fills up too fast, then the flooding occurs back upstream from that point. These are just some of the major sinkholes that we've outlined here, the yellow lines show that all this drainage, this is the, this is the stormwater system of Cookeville, it goes into these sinkholes through caves, and eventually down in the south part of town comes back out as Pigeon Roost Creek at the spring down here. On the north side of town, we have some sinkholes that drain towards the north, but they do the same thing, such as this sink up here that flooded in September, but I'll show you some pictures from more in a minute. In the 1980s, the city produced, or built these series of concrete channels along Willow Avenue and over towards Inser Sink to, to handle floods like these. And this was in 1998, this happens about once, one to two times per year, that channel is designed for that flood, and it holds it pretty well after doing those engineering changes, there's, there's a slide from this past year in 2009, you can see it's up, lots of vegetation's grown in the way, that's one thing that's changed, but these, these are streams, we haven't gotten down to the sinkhole yet, this is, this is, we're getting to the And this is an example of what the water has to go through in order to reach, in order to get into the cave system, so this, there's a shopping cart here for scale, to get lots of things down there in the sinkholes, that's the point, that's the point where the water has to go through, and if it, if it, it can only hold so much, it can only drain at a certain rate, and that's one of the things we figured out, in some cases, how fast the sinkholes can drain. This is from 1998, too, so this was, this was, this has been a problem in Cookeville for some time, but the problem in Inser Sink has been, has been somewhat dealt with when they, when you raise the bridge there at, along what used to be Bunker Hill Road. And caves, so everybody asked about the caves in Cookeville, this is where the major cave systems are, the red lines, mostly along Maple Avenue and up towards Bell Acres Golf Course, Capshaw Cave, there's other, some other caves down here around Neal Street, et cetera. And so this is another example of a, what the water, you know, if this is an entry point here, this is the swallowt where the water has to go in, and this is what it's like inside, one of Cookeville's stormwater drains, which are natural caves. This particular cave is called Tires Despair Cave, which was named some time ago when it was discovered, there were many tires there. In our study that was funded by the city, we, we, we used a lot of the data that the city already had, plus some other data that we gathered, topographic data, air photos, we then delineated the sinkholes and sinkhole basins, and then we had to produce floodplain map was our main product, and we did, we used a method that was, that was developed by the Natural Resources Conservation Service. And we used GIS, and we used the city a few years ago, invested in this LiDAR data, which is laser topographic data, it's very good, and it was very useful in this study. And then we had to do some going out into the field to validate our, our results, this is the nat, the resource, the Natural Resource Conservation Service method that we used, where it's based on the land use, the type of soil, the slopes that are in the drainage basin, and that gives us an estimate of how much runoff we would have after a certain size storm. Okay, and I'm not going to go into the, into the details of this method, but in our, it's outlined in our, in our report. And then, once we've determined how much runoff would come from, for example, the hundred year storm, and we take that volume, and you feed it into the sinkhole, and we just, we use GIS, geographic information systems, computer modeling, to measure how high that would rise on the landscape, and, and then we produce a map with that. Then, we make our map, we have to go out in the field and make sure that our results really look like the real world, and we had, I don't want to call it fortunate event, the hundred year storm, and back in September that flooded out several apartments in town, wasn't, wasn't fortunate for those people, but for our study, it allowed us to go out, in some cases, and see how well we had done with our prediction. We did get students involved, and we, we had to go out and actually measure the stream, and so we would know if our, be able to validate our results. We use, the equipment is fairly, fairly cheap, we didn't have to use a lot of equipment or spend a lot of money on that, we did use some of these recorders and rain gauges. And, this is an, this is an example of one of our validation plots, so the, the black line here is the, is the actual stream flow that occurred for this particular storm, the blue line is our model, in other words, before the storm happened, we predicted that the blue line would be, would be the storm hydrograph, okay, this is just a measure of discharge of the stream, and you can see the lines fit together pretty well. Okay, and that is our, that's our way of determining if our model's working, and we're really predicting the real world in some logical way. This was based on the May 9th, 2009 storm. And lots of people interested in where, where does the drainage go, and this map that we produced divides up the city's sinkholes in determining where, depending on which direction that they, which major drainage basin they, they go into, all the green area goes to Pigeon Roost Creek, that's the area I talked about at the beginning today, and they, this, all these drain in, into the cave system, eventually out through Pigeon Roost Creek. We can see we've got some falling water, river water that goes actually under Buck Mountain, that's all of the purple here, and these, these up here go to, towards Bear Creek, and north towards the Blackburn Fork, and then the purple on this side drains into Cane Creek, which is over at Cane Creek Lake. So we've got a good understanding now of a lot of the different connections that are, that are made. These are all of, if you looked at a closed depression, which is, a sinkhole is just a closed depression on the landscape, these are all the sinkholes in Cookeville, that's the urban growth boundary. Now, not all of those are flooding hazards, we went through, and some of these are very small depressions in, you know, in someone's backyard that, you know, just may pond up a little bit, so we, we really had to narrow this down to the major sinkholes that flood, and that's these. And these are sinkholes that are subject to flooding, and are at least .1 acres in size, and that was our lower limit. And, okay, and then this is the final, really the final product as far as working with, with James and developing something that he, he could use in planting, is the 100-year floodplain map. On this, on the screen, it doesn't look very impressive, but you could blow it up, and you can see that, you could be able to see the detail, each of the, the floodplains are the blue spots that are on there, okay, those are the 100-year floodplains, that's a new product that the city didn't have, and that was the main product of our, of our study. And that will allow the, you all to use it, I don't know how you're going to use it exactly, but use it to, to better manage what's, what's, what's done in the city in terms of developing sinkholes. Here is a close-up of one of the floodplains, okay, so this is the floodplain around the sinkhole, which is commonly known as trog sinkhole, it's on the corner, well, kind of north of the Hooper Eblin Center, which is here, and the Fitness Center, this is the corner of, this is the corner of 12th and Willow, and this is Burn Avenue, and these are the Eagle Creek Apartments, which flooded in, in September. Well, this map, we finished producing, really the final version of this map in August, and we sent it over to Greg and James, and then a few weeks later, we had the flood, and they went out and surveyed, and the floodplain that we had drawn in was within a half a foot of what actually flooded that day, and that was, that was, not all of our, not all of ours ended up being that, but that one was kind of fortunate that it, that it worked out, that our model looked pretty good in that case. And, this, these are the apartments here that are shown in the next slide. These are pictures that the Herald Citizens supplied to us, and you remember, you may have seen these in the newspaper when that came out. And those are some of the students evacuating out of those Eagle Creek Apartments. And James asked that we give a few recommendations, and this is the last part that we do that on. Number one, it's recommended to prohibit or limit building permits within the 100-year sinkhole floodplains, the Eagle Creek Apartments are obviously built within the 100-year, well within the 100-year floodplain, that sinkhole, we didn't know that before the time, before this study. This is the Melrose subdivision off of East 9th Street, or West 9th Street, and this is a photograph from the 1980s, here's a photograph from September 2009, so it's an ongoing problem in, in some subdivisions. Recommendation number two, reduce impervious surfaces in the sinkhole watersheds. An impervious surface is a concrete driveway, an asphalt road, a parking lot, that doesn't permit infiltration, and the water runs off very quickly from those surfaces and causes the streams, and in this case, in Cookeville, sinkholes to rise. And so, reducing the, the number of those surfaces, that's really the main cause of sinkhole flooding, is rapid runoff. There are technologies available, such as porous asphalt surfaces, that are now in wide use, and this is some data that shows the reduction in flooding if those surfaces are Also, and so, the, the impervious surfaces, this is something we did looking back in a previous time, at between 1955 and 1970, 1997 in Cookeville, the amount of commercial industrial land, that's where most of your impervious surfaces are found, that increased by 377 percent, and that's all of the, this kind of dark, darker brown color here, and then we see it expanding by 1997, so that's, that's, that's all of the progress in Cookeville. But I think there's probably ways to, to have that type of development, but limit the, the amount of flooding that takes place from that. And this is the, this is the picture from our, a report again about the impervious surface area in, in Cookeville. It's about the, my number got cut off right there, okay, so the average, for each sinkhole drainage area, the average impervious area is about 22 percent. Recommendation number three, require greater use of detention ponds to reduce water and pollutant runoff, detention ponds work where they're put in, and we, we saw that in our study. This is another one of those curves we use to test our results, in this case, our blue line is our predicted flood, we predicted it would flood this high, and the actual results were down here. And, and so, this, we looked at, we went out and looked at the basin, realized there's a big detention basin there that's doing its job, that's what a detention basin's supposed to do, it's supposed to cut the top off the, these peaks and the hydrograph, and that's exactly what it did, so it, it catches the water slowly, it catches the water and then lets it drain out slowly. And these are in use in the city, but there are areas in the city that could, the detention basins could be, more could be placed in, more could be, and some could be enlarged, as we've seen, some aren't large enough. Recommendation four, reduce trash entering the sinkholes, possibly by the use of trash rack filters or cleanup efforts, this is a sinkhole near Kmart, and you can see that the amount of debris will reduce the rate the sinkhole can drain. And then, the final recommendation is to invest in greenways or parks around sinkholes, such as what was done at Inser Sink Park, and you may ask, well, where else could you do something like that? This is one area in Cookeville, I don't know if anyone recognizes, it's not, it's not a place a lot of people go, but it is right in the middle of town. And it is located right off of Maple Avenue between the, I don't know quite how to describe it, behind Walmart, and if you go up Maple Avenue and off of Veterans, and you turn left, there's a big patch of woods, and I think some of you are familiar with that property that, that has been, I think, I think some of it's been for sale from time to time, that, and maybe in today's economy, maybe the price on that land has come down some, but, but what a great place for, for the city, and looking forward at protecting an area, and it's a, it's a big area in town, and it's quite, quite beautiful, a lot of the old-time locals I've talked to said these places used to be frequented, like on Sunday afternoons for picnics and things in the old days, this is a nice, cool area, you've got cave, you've got a couple cave entrances and things around that, around those areas. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. Do we have a motion to accept the, the report from Dr. Hart and Tennessee Tech?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. Any comments from the council, or James, would you?
Could I just ask a question? One of the recommendations was, was the building of detention ponds, and we do some of that, but does that increase mosquito breeding by use of a lot of those, in your, in your experience?
I, I don't know, I'm not, we might need to ask a biologist that, I would tend to think that they, they don't too much, because the water's in and out, you know, in a matter of, they're designed to drain out, they're not, they don't sit there with a lot of water in them, if they're well-designed.
They slow the water down, it's their purpose, they don't hold the water forever, it's just to let, it just slows the water down, it's their intention. But we're really pleased with the report, we want to thank the council for allowing Tech to do this for us, but, I don't know if you mentioned this, but about three-fourths of the city's drainage is accomplished by sinkholes, so there were two main reasons that we needed the study, one was to try to identify these areas so we could protect them, and the other was, and some of the photos indicated, we're trying to protect people from developing in these areas, and so they don't flood, so there were two main reasons we had to have this, and we really thank you for letting us do it.
Well, my question, you know, we had the, the folks from the neighborhood that, that was flooded not long ago, and was talking about this, so how, how will we take this information then, and, and utilize that to, for new developable land, are we gonna, are we gonna have to pass an ordinance that doesn't allow the development of those properties?
Well, that's, that's what we'll be studying over the next couple of months, is how do we protect these areas, how do we best regulate them, we've looked at, our, the planning staff has looked at several other cities to see how they currently regulate these, Bowling Green's a good example, of one that has a drainage system sort of like this, Knoxville does, we're looking at those, we'll draft something, take it through the Planning Commission, and bring it to the council, but we currently have sinkhole regulations in our zoning code, they're just, there's not much to them, and they really need to be beefed up, or, not necessarily beefed up, but expanded to provide better coverage and better protection.
Now that this is, we've accepted this, what's our liability if something's developed, someone builds on it, and then like the case we had out off Old Kentucky Road, that if we don't act upon this in some, is there a certain timeframe that we're going to have to act upon this to keep from being liable?
Well, I think if the, if the people in the codes department issue a building permit, they're legally entitled to build on, I think the issue is making sure that it complies with the codes, and is on a solid foundation, and things like that, and I think that's what James probably was talking about for going to the Planning Commission, Commission, and developing some criteria, but the citizens should know, based on this study, that if they want to buy land in one of these suspect areas, the city has those maps available, and people can come and look at that at the time they get a building permit, and I would think that should be made available to them, if somebody comes into one of these areas and says, I want a building permit for 925 East 6th Street, which is my house, and, and it's got a sinkhole in it, that, that they, they should say, okay, here's the plat for your house, and there's some problem there, so, I don't think it exposes us to any liability as long as we require the building permit, require them to meet the codes, and give them the opportunity to look at the property with respect to like the floodplain, or the sinkhole study, or anything like that.
Well, we, we already had a study that covered about half the city, that was done, what, 20 years ago, Jeff, or something like that, but they were identified, and it was also done by Tech, but again, we've grown so much, that was another reason why we needed an updated study, because we were incomplete on it, but I wouldn't assume we'd have any more liability than we already have on that.
Well, and I think for, as the council's read the Planning Commission, we're looking for a statistical study that allows us to show a home, a potential homeowner, something that they can rely upon, because one of the things that we have challenges sometimes is people come in, they ask, is this a problematic area, is this not a problematic area, and it's more arbitrary than it is statistical, and so what this provides us, because one of the most surprising forms of data they gave us is the difference between 1955 and, and today, it's phenomenal how the city has changed, and so, when you take in the rates of flow, and, and what we're doing is stormwater, we're able to show citizens, hey, this is a piece of property, and we, it's been designated by an independent third party that it could be problematic, whereas we didn't have that before, and I think that's one of the concerns that the property owners had when they came and talked to us about these flood areas, because you can change the flow of water by using good practices, which is what a stormwater detention pond does, but what we have to do is, we have to be reasonable in both ways of finding good ways to do that, and I think what this does is empowers our different departments the ability to do that, and so, it's exciting to see that happen, and anytime, I guess as a professor, you have statistical data that backs up your theory, it's always good, but we appreciate your hard work on this, I know it's taken a long, long time to do that, so.
I have a question, and it, it was a great study, I thought it was fascinating, I liked all the maps and statistics, and very interesting living in this area, and aware of this, but now we've got concrete evidence of it, but do we put on our regular cleanup crews to clean out those sinkholes? Greg, I guess that's really to you, isn't it?
It's more of a, not on a regular, it's more of a problem type.
Yeah, okay.
Most of these sinkholes are on private property.
Right.
The ones that weigh up and trawl over, we try to...
Keep an eye on them, okay, because I know sometimes Tech students go out and help clean out the sinkholes, am I right about that?
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes they do that, yeah, cave-in club.
Yeah, well, actually...
A volunteer group does entry slaking about once a year.
Yeah, it's not the sinkhole they clean out, it's the stewit, what was that, you called it, the entry into it?
Swallowt.
The swallowt.
Swallowt, stewit, sorry, swallowt.
You hungry?
James, her question brings up, I think, a pretty good point, have we considered during our plating and planning, the possibility of, whenever there is a new piece of property that comes up for development, of designating a drainage easement area across, which would allow us to, to do that, or?
Well, that's a good question, we've, that's been discussed for years, and there's... We've, that's been discussed for years, and there's, there's no decision been made to do that. There's a lot of different questions in terms of cost, liability, and so forth, and access and private property. What some cities have done, if they've identified the most important ones and worked something out like that, but, like I said, we've got, I don't remember the number, it's well over 100 sinkholes that, okay, over 200, so. But, one thing, other point I want to make, when we were talking about the sinkhole floodplains, remember, we have regulations for floodplains along our streams now, where we regulate developments. You can still develop in floodplains, but there's standards for that, and that's what we want to try to develop for the areas around sinkholes.
Two years ago, we adopted the new FEMA floodplain maps, and people were able, I think maybe that was a year ago, they were able to apply for flood insurance. And we compared what those maps look like to these new maps, and whether there's new people that might qualify for flood insurance because of those.
These, those are two different animals. This is only evaluate sinkholes, not the streams. The only one that's on the flood map would be the Inter-Sink. That's the only sinkhole that's, and that's because it has a major tributary that goes into it.
There's a couple, there's a couple more.
Oh, are there?
Yeah, but there's just, just like one or two, I think. The question that we had was whether that would be recognized, you know, we came up with these maps, you know, were they, are they, are they going to be recognized by FEMA as one of your floodplains? You talked about that you could, you could appeal for that or something?
Yeah, that, well, if we so desire, but that's what we've got to study, because there's a, what happens once FEMA designates it as a flood hazard area, and it's on your maps, then you're required by most lenders to buy insurance. So, that's a big step. And that would apply for existing structures, too. So, that's a decision that, that could impact a lot of people. If you're in an existing structure in a FEMA floodplain, when you sell your house, most lenders require the purchaser to buy insurance. Now, if you already own it for in clear, you're not required to. But, most banks do require now to buy insurance, so that's, that's a big step. But, it adds more teeth to protection around these sinkholes. But, that's a big decision to make, and that's the kind of information, now that we have the study, and we're evaluating other cities that will be coming back months from now, too.
But, if they had adopted those, and based upon what I'm understanding about the FEMA flood rates, the rates are discounted if you're in that floodplain.
Yes, significantly.
But, because the apartment photos that you showed us show this floodwater, and there was no flood insurance there, from my understanding, and being able to buy flood insurance, knowing that you have a problem, at a much discounted rate would be better for the citizens, in my opinion, than it would be not to enact, but, on this new data that we have.
Yep, and that's accurate. But, again, it would require FEMA accepting our doubt and incorporating it in our flood maps, and they have done that for other cities. McMinnville has a lot of sinkhole flooding, and their, their sinkholes are included on their flood map, that are Zone X. But, that's, we can petition FEMA to do that.
In regard to the impervious surfaces, suggestion is to lessen those. Some years ago, there was talk about, and, and some areas, some cities used pervious concrete, or pervious some kind of materials. And then, they found that that was not stable enough or something. So, has there been any, any improvement made upon that? And are cities using that material now, like for parking lots, driveways, subdivisions?
Now, there's been quite a bit of improvement on it. The concrete they use now is, is much stronger. What they're tending to do, and Greg can speak on this, we've been to a couple seminars about it. What they're tending to do is the, the vehicle lanes, the, the travel lanes are using regular materials, but where you park, where there's less weight, than they use the pervious. And there's other different materials, too. They've got the pavers that you can use, that basically are just rings that you put in that have grass growing through them. There's different options. That's something else we've not, we would, that, once all this is done, and we adopt our new plan, we want to look at other amendments to the code where to encourage, maybe not require, but to encourage this. For trade-offs, we may allow other zoning benefits. If you provide pervious materials, for example, you can increase density, reduce setbacks, allow more parking. There's different things you can do to encourage. And then, we'll also look at, at requiring, if that's something the city wants to do.
Well, and I've seen a couple of communities, too, they're using sidewalks for this pervious. It makes a big difference. You don't have runoff for all the new sidewalks, things like that. One of the things we have to be careful of, and Greg knows this probably better than anybody, is there's so many different types of soils in Cookeville. Some absorb water and some don't. So, if you put this concrete in and it goes down to a clay bed, the water's got no place to go except fill up. And so, we have difficulty sometimes, depending on where it is. You have to do a soil study based upon where these ponds are going to go. But, having these different geographical or geological things makes it a bigger challenge for us, which is why we're here, but.
Yeah. And it's, you know, my understanding from a civil engineer friend of mine is that these, these different types of concrete materials, they're engineered and designed very well. The only problem is maintaining them. They tend to fill up. The top becomes covered with, you know, as runoff runs across it, debris and dirt get in there and it clogs it up, so they have to be maintained. And, you know, I would encourage, I know like with our park across the street there, we took up all that asphalt, and it's now grass, trees, those kinds of things. And I know the city of Atlanta's done studies on their tree planting and those sort of natural areas that naturally absorb a lot of that water. So, we need to be sure to keep a, keep the natural aspects of our community there, too. Any other comments by the council? Any other comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Mills and Dr. Hart. Now, to the old business portion of our meeting. Item three, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January the 21st, 2010. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No approval, second.
Have our motion second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item four, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 100101, amending the Cookeville Municipal Code by repealing Title IX, Chapter Eight, Adult Establishments, and replacing with a new Chapter Eight, Sexually Oriented Businesses. Sponsor, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this is second reading. Between first and second reading, we received an email from Elias Marrero, who owns Love Shack, and he had a couple of questions about, under our definitions, the business, he said businesses such as Videomax, and he said Borders Bookstore, which we don't have one. He's probably talking about Books-A-Million. But, he said they have an extensive selection that would exceed the 500 square feet. And in talking to our attorney in Chattanooga today, he said that there was one word in, in both ordinances that said access to this material rather than to browse would, would satisfy that, in other words, you don't use all the aisles and the doors coming into the store and everything else as part of the area for those materials to be, to exceed 500 square feet. So, we made that change. We changed the word access to browse in, in both ordinances. And today, Jeff and his staff went out and looked at Videomax and at Books-A-Million, and neither one exceeded 500 square feet. And our answer to that, too, is that if, if there are other stores that, that do violate the 500 square feet or the, or the terms of this ordinance in that store, would have to be licensed as an adult establishment. And we also changed, when, when the ordinance becomes effective, according to our municipal code, ordinance has become effective 14 days after final passage, so we changed that on the ordinance. But, those are very minor changes.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to approve as containing the changes?
Some move.
Second.
And a second. All right, discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience?
There, there was a question about the, the license, the licensing of the workers. Do, do you want to speak to that? That you, would you come, ask your question so we can get it answered and see what we?
In, in the new ordinance, it says that there is to be employee licensing. So, what I'm asking are, is that for, my business qualifies for this new ordinance. Are you requiring that that also means that my employees will be required to have an employee license?
Yes, ma'am.
They will be required?
Yes, ma'am, and you'll have to get a new license in 14 days, and the city clerk will work with you. If there's a prorata portion of this year's fee, you'd be refunded that, and you'd pay the new fee, $50 since it's a renewal, so you'll probably end up getting money back. But, you have to, your business location stays the same and it's grandfathered in, but you have to come into compliance with all the other terms of this ordinance.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. So, at the, in, in the 14-day period, when I get my new license, I'm going to be required then to bring my employees with me for them to equally be licensed in 14 days?
Well, they, no, they would be licensed as an employee. And if you'll, if you've read the ordinance, you'll see where employees can get temporary license upon filling out the application and submitting the fee, and then they go through like a background check, and then they're, they're given a permanent license. But, yes, that includes part-time and full-time employees, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I was needing to know.
When you get, when you get your new license, whatever employees you have, you should bring them with you, and you probably ought to go ahead and get the applications as soon as they're available from, I guess Ms. McLean is going to do that. And go ahead and get those filled out and just turn them in, and you can probably get all that worked out in advance. So, it's a seamless procedure for you.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Very good. Any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item five, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 091225, amendments to the Cookeville Zoning Code concerning regulations for sexually oriented businesses. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, of course, this is second reading, and Mr. Shipley has noted that the revisions that were made between, after first reading, we would recommend for approval with those revisions noted by Mr. Shipley.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? All right, seeing no further comments, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. New business, item six, consider approval of the Cookeville Regional Medical Center renovation and expansion project of the labor and delivery suites, observation area, newborn nursery, in the amount not to exceed $4 million. Sponsor, Mr. Paul Corthe of Cookeville Regional Medical Center.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Hospital Board of Trustees to request approval, again, on not-to-exceed basis of $4 million, to expand the hospital's OB, labor and delivery, and nursery area. This is a renovation of existing hospital space. We have seen significant growth in our deliveries over the past few years. We are, we're up to almost 1,600 births per year now, and we've much outgrown the space that we moved into in 1999. This project will provide the following. We'll have six additional observation and holding areas for women in labor. Each room will have an individual, it's an individual room with individual restrooms. Currently, we have an observation area that has four beds in one room and one restroom for those individuals that are in labor. This area also will construct five new labor and delivery rooms. These rooms, also recovery in those rooms, and that will increase our capacity from seven to 12 rooms. We're also expanding our nursery. We currently have 16 nursery beds, and we'll be adding another 16 to give us a capacity of 32 nursery beds. This project is, is much needed for the community. It does meet the goals and needs of the medical center, and it will be funded with cash reserves. Turner Construction Company has done, will be doing this project on a guaranteed maximum price, again, not to exceed $4 million. Be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Corthe. Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second. The motion second. Any discussion by the council?
I just want to say that my grandchild was just, first grandchild was just born there about on the 15th of this month, and that we had exceptional service, and I want to commend the hospital and their whole staff for just doing a wonderful job.
I think that was during a very busy time, too, if I remember.
It was, jam-packed.
We had a lot of babies going on then, so it is, it is a busy area.
I happened to spend the day yesterday from about 8 till 4:30 at the hospital, and I was aware of the babies being born because of the little lullaby that comes on. And in the period of time that I was there, three babies were born, and I thought, well, yeah, I guess we need this. You don't want babies being born out in the hall.
Exactly.
No, no.
No, no.
That sound also plays when Bernie takes a nap, so.
He's not here to defend himself.
I have more reason to say it.
All right, any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Corthe.
Thank you.
Hearing from officers, councilmen, and city manager, item seven, receive the financial statements July 1, 09 through December 31, 09. Sponsor, Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I'll be as brief as possible, and just stop me at any time, ask me any questions, and I'll try to answer those for you. As you know, we worked through the budget process last spring. I think we were very conservative on our revenue estimates and our appropriations for all the departments. We had a, have a $19,973,000 revenue budget. Currently, to date through December 31 of 09, we'd received $9,763,000, right at 48, a little over 48%, almost 49% of our budget. Property tax, we've received 39% of that so far to date. That's right in line with where we are typically at December 31. A lot of the families wait until February to pay that property tax. So, right in line with property tax, we have our local option sales tax. It's right in line with budget. We are projecting by the end of the year, though, right now, just to kind of look, right now, it says 49.54% of that budget. We're projecting, based on the rest of the year, to hit $9,461,000. That's what we have estimated for the rest of the year. That'll get us at 98.2% of that budget line item. It's about $180,000 short of what we budgeted. We've been fortunate in some other areas to have some additional revenue right now. Our hall income tax, that actually came in $150,000 more than what we budgeted, so that's going to help offset that shortfall in our sales tax numbers. Licensing permits, some building permits, we've had some extra revenue there. So, again, right in line, pretty much, kind of made it up in different areas, our budget numbers, our revenue numbers, not exactly on sales tax, but we made it up in some other areas. So, again, 48, almost 49% of our total revenue to date. On the expenditure side, looking at the departments, we're pretty much right in line with expenditures. 49% of the total operating budget across the general fund, that's what we've spent to date. It's a $19,904,000 budget. We've spent $9,791,000 of that so far. One thing to point out on our police capital, even though we had no capital budget for any of our departments, that $42,000 is covered by a grant that they received, and that was to purchase a patrol car and some camera equipment. So, that's covered by a grant. But, again, on the expenditure side, we are right in line with budget. I want to keep moving on pretty quick. You stop me if you, if you need to. Our state street aid, again, that, all of our funds are pretty much right in line with, with estimates. Total revenue received to date in the state street aid of $359,000. We had a total budget and revenue of $716,000, so 50% of the revenue we've received. We've expended in the operating side, 71% of our budget. Again, we did a lot of the paving last fall, and that kind of makes the expenditure there as terms of a percentage of the total budget, a little over the 50% mark. We've had a capital purchase there. See, we budgeted $140,000. We actually got that brush truck delivered, I think, this past month in January. So, in our next report we have for you, you'll see some of those capital expenditures being paid. Mine Lick Creek is a bridge repair that's being funded by a grant with the state of Tennessee. And again, total expenditures, $470,000 so far in the state street aid budget. And our solid waste fund budget, received to date, $718,000 in the revenue. We budgeted $1,500,000. to date, $718,000 in the revenue. We budgeted $1,525,000. So, 47% of the budget is what we've received to date. On the expenditure side, we're at, on the operating expenditures, we're at almost 49% of that budget. So, again, everything's right in line on the expenditure side. In the police department, they have their drug fund. Again, no real surprises at this point there. 44, 45% of the budget they've expended at this point. Basically, I think they purchased some tasers so far to date in there with their drug fund money.
Mike, what happened to the $200,000 seizure funds last year?
That is still in the court system.
They're trying to get it.
They're, they're trying to get that and just waiting on the, the court system to determine what to do with that money.
Believe it or not, somebody said, I'd like to have, that's my $200,000. I'd like to have it back.
Oh, really?
Somebody actually has filed a claim.
Yeah.
To, to try to receive the $200,000 back.
Mm-hmm. So, that's still to work out through the courts. We'll see.
Fell out of their pocket.
Well, what I remember, I thought it was hidden.
Yeah, right into the, right into the pan, a quarter pan of that car.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Animal control fund received $85,000, a little over $85,000 of their budgeted revenue to date. Their expenditures to date, just 43%. They've spent $77,000 of their $179,000 budget. So, again, animal control fund is in line. Economic Development Fund received $320,000 of the total $553,000 we budgeted in that fund. We've expended $430,402. So far, that's for the engineering services, for the new mixed-use business park and the improvements to Lee Seminary Road. We do have a payment that we'll make in April to the, to the county. That's the, the purchase of the property out there for the business park. We pay the county annually for that. And, we'll make that payment to them in April. But, again, things are right in line. Our debt service fund, which is where we pay principal and interest on any debt that we have with the bonds. One thing of interest to point out there is the interest that we're paying on our variable rate debt right now. If you see, line item says 49, 400 total interest on our loans. We paid out $70,561 in interest. We budget that based on a 4% rate. So far, our rate this year is well below 1%. And, so, that money will just go back into the fund balance, and it'll give us additional debt capacity in the future. But, it'll, so, we've been fortunate with our variable rate debt. Water quality control, again, with our utilities, I think you'll see everything is right in line with the budget. They've received $5,867,000 of their operating revenue. Total revenue they received to date, $5,879,000, of a $14 million revenue budget. The expenditures to date on, on their operating side, they're at 46.5% of their operating budget. So, again, everything seems to be well within budget. And, then on the electric department, kind of the same story. Again, right in line with their expenditure budget. They're only at 42% of their total expenditure budget. They've spent $22,808,000 of their $53,757,000 budget. I think our gas department, it's right in line with where it should be at this point, December 31. Typically, we don't see our revenue come through until we get through the winter months, and that's what we're seeing here. But, again, no surprises there. We did, just to kind of point something out to you, if you notice, our bond proceeds, back in April or May, you approved a resolution that I could refund a bond issue that we had to try to save some interest money. That process, we didn't get that actually closed till July. So, that's the reason you see those bond proceeds here. And, then on the expenditure side, we actually paid off that outstanding debt issue. And, that's the reason you see the $2,640,000. But, we only budgeted $330,000. It's because we didn't get that closed until July. So, we took care of that. And, it's going to save us a little over $100,000 over the next five years in interest. So... Last fund I have for you is just our employee insurance fund. We've all talked about that back in December, and the issues we've been faced with our insurance fund. And, to date, we've got two, $1,647,000 in revenue, which is right at 50% of what we budgeted. And, total expenditures in that fund, $1,860,000, which is 56%. If you look at the claims number, you can see we're at 58% of that, what we'd budgeted in the claims. And, again, we're, we made some changes to the health plan, changing the network. Hopefully, some of the claims will slow down a little bit. And, then we started the process to put this insurance committee together. So, we're going to look at going forward next year in 2011 of having some changes for our health insurance fund for our employees. But, I'm going to stop there. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Any comments, your questions from the council?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we have our hearing of citizens' indoor delegations. Just a couple of quick comments. We will be having a citizen survey that'll be coming out in the mail soon. It is a random survey, and in a random survey, not everyone receives the survey. So, don't, don't be surprised if you don't get one. But, if you do get one, it's very important for us to have your feedback as we move forward into the next, next few years here in the city. Also, one thing I'd just like to add, we will be having the census will be coming up at the end of March, and you should be receiving that in the mail. It's very important that we all participate in that. It's, as you probably read about in the paper or heard on the radio, it's, it's all confidential information. But, that, those numbers that are calculated by the Census Bureau are used in a competitive way for us to receive a lot of grant funds and different types of funding back to this community. And, as we all pay our portion of our taxes and things, it's nice to get that money back. And, I would rather us get as much of it back as we possibly can. So, make sure you're counted at least once and participate in that. Any other comments by the council?
I have one comment. A group of concerned citizens, and I'm, I'm not going to name all the names because, of course, I didn't bring the list, have created a blog that people can go to to help the victims in Haiti. And, also, they're looking at trying to give them funds for the infrastructure for later on because, of course, it's not, once we get everything stabilized, then it's got to be rebuilt. And, I'm going to say this as fast, as slowly as I can, but this is the blog that you can go to if you wish to help Cookevillians, help Haiti. And, it's www.wecanrebuildhaiti.blogspot.com. And, I can, I'll have that. And, if anybody wants to email me at my city email, then I can send that to you if I didn't say that clearly enough.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Comments from the audience? We always open up the floor for up to three minutes. You can come to our council meetings. And, I had a few extra seats tonight. So, please come and attend and bring your comments and concerns to the city, and we'll gladly take those.
Do you want to announce about the transit starting Saturday?
Oh, yes, very good comment. We will, through UCHRA, the city of Cookeville, the Cookeville Regional Medical Center, and Tennessee Tech University, and I'm sure somebody else that I'm leaving out, they have organized and put together CATS, Cookeville Area Transit System. And, this Saturday is Ride for Free Day. There will be buses in route across the city and around. And, I would encourage you to get out and ride that for free to become familiar with it. I think in the future, you can buy an all-day pass to ride for $3, or you can just pay a dollar each time you get on the bus.
Do they have actual bus station stops with the little sign?
There are bus stops around town. It's a, it's sort of a black and white sign that has the CATS logo.
Okay.
And, and point there is be careful when that bus stops. I mean, they'll have flashing lights on. They've been practicing it in heavy traffic. They said today, driving down South Jefferson Avenue, you know, like on Friday afternoon at 3:30 with lots of traffic and had no issue. So, it should be fine. But, but be, be cautious, cautious about having that bus on our city streets.
What hours is it Saturday?
I believe it starts at, I don't have that map in front of me, but I believe it's at, does it start at 1:00 on Saturday?
1:00.
Liz, 1:11. Liz Engel from the Herald Citizen, she's been to all of our meetings, has done a fantastic job publicizing the, the event as, as, as other media outlets. And, we appreciate all that. I think this is, it's, it is something that we don't really qualify for federal transit dollars, for mass transit, because we don't have 50,000 persons in our service area. So, again, back to the census, make sure you're counted so that maybe we can one day get closer to that, to that mark to receive funding.
At least once.
At least once.
[laughing]
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.